We'll call a regular meeting in the New Ulm City Council for February 20th, 2018, 4:30 PM. The order, first item on the agenda is your consent agenda items. What's your wishes?
I'll offer a motion to approve those.
Second.
We got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda items. Any discussion on any? See a nun? No in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posse, no? Motion carries. Item 2A, conduct a public hearing to consider a request from Green Mill Best Western Plus 2101 South Broadway for a noise variance to allow live bands to perform in the parking lot for the Block Fest after-party outside event to be held Saturday, March 3rd, 2018. Anybody having it? Public hearing? Anybody want to be heard? Nobody? Entertainer motion?
I'll offer a motion to close public hearing and allow the noise variance to allow live bands to perform on Saturday, March 3rd, 2018 at the Best Western Plus.
Resolution.
What's that? We got a motion and a second, offer a resolution, close the hearing.
Resolution.
Yes. Offer the resolution, waive the reading, closing the public hearing. Any more discussion? See a nun? Finance director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item 2B, conduct a public hearing to consider a resolution on the proposed 2018 MSAS improvement project. Mr. Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a project that was included in the city engineer's capital improvement memorandum recently. And as you recall, Mr. Statheim showed a diagram of the improvements we're planning for German Street from 3rd to 7th North Street, basically along the ball field and the football area and there's residents on the west side. So it's a complete underground reconstruction and roadway improvements.
Just pointing to the...
Okay. Maybe, Joey, you could slide up to the intersection so we could show the curb extensions at 4th and 5th North to basically help the pedestrian traffic during high-capacity events like baseball games and football games. We'll continue to preserve the parallel parking on both sides of the street and basically put back what's there. Any sidewalk that's disturbed is part of the underground. Utility work will also be replaced as part of the project. And if we find any trip hazards, we could deal with those at the same time. So I have not received any written comments regarding this project. Mr. Statheim and I did meet with the three local high school athletic directors, as well as the baseball association, and discussed the project. They were all in favor of moving ahead. We worked out some concerns with regard to deliveries for the ball field and future handicap parking and those items. So with that, you could open it up to the public hearing, Mr. President.
Okay. Public hearing. Anybody like to be heard?
So with all our baseball games, you know, you said you've talked to the different groups. What are... How are you going to try and work around all these baseball games we have in our community?
Mr. President and Counselor Schultz, we will have pedestrian access across German Street. There will be times when they cannot park on German Street, but the side streets will all be open and it's in the contract or will be in the contract that they need to maintain at least one or two pedestrian accesses. The same with the community center down on 6th South. We'll have to keep access for them as there's only one driveway there. And there's a couple houses that do not have alley access, but for the most part, we'll be able to accommodate those type of activities, I think, without any challenge.
Do you see this as an early spring project or late fall? Or what's your time is... guesstimates?
Mr. President, we hope to bid this in early April. And as soon as the weather cooperates, we would hope that the contractor would proceed early and be done perhaps mid-September. It depends who the contractor is. My expectation is it'll be tied into the subcontractor with the state job on 7th North so they can do... There's some utility crossings and things that need to happen at the same time. So hopefully it'll be done, began early and done by mid-September.
Right. Thank you.
Step up to the mic. Name and address for the record, please.
I'm Chris Fletcher and I'm a property owner at 415 North German. And I was just wondering, you know, will... How will the property owners be notified regarding any assessments or anything of that nature?
Mr. Fletcher, is that...
Ledger.
Ledger? Well, you've been notified as with this public hearing notice that there will be special assessments. After the project is completed, we'll send you another notice with the special assessment amount. But I can tell you with regard to... You have a single-family home?
Yes.
That we have recommended that they be assessed at $3,300 per residential unit. So that would be the expected assessment. That's payable over a 10-year period with simple interest on the unpaid balance. We don't know that interest amount yet because we haven't sold the bond issues, but typically it's about 3%, 3.5%, 4%. Okay?
Thank you. Anybody else like to be heard? Anybody on the council got any questions, concerns? Please step up to the mic. Name and address for the record, please.
John Ish at German Street Condominium. Question I have is, you said it began from 4th Street rather than 3rd?
If I said that, I was incorrect. It's beginning at 3rd to 7th.
Beginning at 3rd, okay.
So I apologize.
Because I was going to leave if it's only at 4th. Darn it. Question I have is how do you handle a condominium?
Oh, good question.
Well, in that case, there's a methodology that we apply. And in this case, that condominium structure is over three parcels. So 3 times 3,300 is 99, just under 10,000. And we divided that by the 15 units that are within there. I think it came out to like 660 per residential or per condo. Is that what they're called?
Yeah. Units, they're 15 units, right?
Let me look at the numbers quick here. Yeah, $660 per unit.
660?
Yeah.
And will that assessment be sent to the actual owner or to the association itself?
It's sent to the owner according to state statute.
Yep. Okay. I checked that out in St. Paul.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to be heard? See a nun? Entertainer resolution?
I'll offer the resolution to waive the reading and close the public hearing ordering in the 2018 MSAS improvement project and authorizing the preparation of plans and specifications.
Second. We got a motion and a second, offer a resolution, waive the reading. Any more discussion? See a nun? Finance director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item 2C, conduct a public hearing to consider a resolution approving with conditions the final plat of the Fair Hills 6th Edition located at 1314 to 1422 Maple Drive, Maplewood Drive.
I'd like to just add the planning commission unanimously recommended approval of the final plat with conditions at the January 25th, 2018 meeting. And I believe Dave Schnelberg's going to speak on another item here.
Okay. Dave Schnelberg, Community Development Director. The owner of the property is Prairie Land Development. They are proposing to plat 13.81 acres into 29 single-family lots and four lots that could accommodate two twin homes. Of the outstanding conditions, I'd like to draw your attention to the very last one, which is the applicant was to provide a name for the street that runs through the subdivision. And the owner has advised us that they are going to call that street Red Bud Road. And that is a tree shrub that it's being named after.
Yeah, right.
I was kind of hoping for Charlie Schmitz, but I guess...
Anybody else? Public hearing? Nobody else wishes to be heard? Just close the public hearing, offer a resolution, waive the reading, approving with conditions the final plat of Fair Hills 6th Edition located at 1314 through 1422 Maplewood Drive.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, closing the public hearing, offer a resolution, waive the reading. Any more discussion? See a nun? Finance director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item 3A, consider a resolution to petition the court to establish a charter commission. I guess what we're going to be doing tonight is going through and picking the list of people that will sit on the charter commission. We need the first, I would assume, discuss how many people we would like to have on the charter commission. And then after that, do a picking.
Mr. President, just by way of information, I think the council is aware of this, but as we discussed at the last meeting, the state statute requires that the members of the commission would be appointed by the chief judge of this judicial district. We'd be looking to the council to recommend the names, names and addresses. It has to be at least seven people, can be up to 15 people, which is what staff has put together on the list. After the resolution, if a resolution would be adopted, then we would forward that with the appropriate petition to the court. I'm assuming that the chief judge will grant whatever our request is and appoint the commissioners and then we can begin work.
Okay. I guess I got one question. We were supplied a list of 15 names. Was there more? Or is that...
That was it.
That was it?
That was it.
Just a coincidence that it was 15?
Yeah, just a coincidence, but it's all we received. And that includes the city council members that said they wanted to be on it.
So how many do we want? I mean, last time you said you had seven.
We had seven last time, and I think I might have been the chair. I can't remember back for sure. Did we have a...
Dan Bernick.
Dan Bernick was?
Yeah.
Okay.
President of council, Dan Bernick was the chair at the time.
Okay. And I know, I think we had seven, right?
Yep, we had seven.
And we had some heavy-duty issues last time. We went through a lot of data, a lot of information, and it clicked really well. And sometimes I get nervous, the more you have, the more...
Well, that's what I was thinking, is 15 too many?
Yes. 15's the max.
Right. It's had too many.
It's too many, yes.
So, do we want to go with the minimum?
You know, I, as I said last time, you know, 7's the minimum, 15's the maximum. But we have an opportunity to maybe include people in their government that don't typically have an opportunity to. And so, you know, the number's up to you guys, but there's many people on this list, both young and old, that may not have participated or may have participated a lot in the past. So having the more people, the more opportunity you have for them.
Sure, and you want some new folks, too, and some new blood. Do we have the list from who was involved last time in 11?
I don't believe we have it here.
Okay. It's not critical, but I was just curious.
Mr. President, for whatever it might be worth, again, it's absolutely your call. I understand it could be more cumbersome working with this many people, but I agree with the city manager. I think it's good to have some diversity.
Yes.
People from all sorts of ages, walks of life, professions. Plus, if we're meeting over the summer, it might be hard to get enough people, a lot of people to show up all the time for the meetings. It's a pretty major commitment. So there's nothing magical about 15, but I could definitely see reasons for having more than seven. And I think everybody that's on this list looks very qualified. I think it would be a very good commission if they would be appointed, so.
I had one question on here. If we're going to be looking at commissions, and we've had some discussion in the past about potentially combining some commissions, I'm wondering, Mayor, if your role presenting that information to us or your role as sitting as a committee member, where do you think would be most productive for you? I don't have an answer for that. I'm just asking the question. Because you know all these commissions and you know where, what's... Where maybe some could be consolidated, some could be eliminated. I'm picturing you presenting to us.
About the time that I think there could be one eliminated, I get 10 reasons why they should be continued. We have combined planning and zoning, which was very good. There was one commission that we could not get people to sit on, so that commission has dropped off. All the other commissions seem to be operating at a fairly high level. I don't make all boards and all commissions at every time, but those that I do attend active discussion and work that needs to be done.
Okay. Well, Mr. President, I can interrupt. I also think that a lot of our commissions are created under the city code, and this is a charter commission, so it wouldn't have any impact. Unless there was something under the charter, it's not going to impact whatever we've got in the code.
Right. I guess, I don't know. We're talking about seven, maybe more, whatever. I guess I'd have a suggestion. I already did mine. What I did is I took the list and I picked out seven, put on the two city council people that volunteered to be on it, added five more, and I printed out some sheets. We could pass them around to each one of the councilmen, do the same thing, throw the names together, whatever we get. Each one picks five. We end up with nine. We got nine, we got 10, we got 10. Each one picks their five.
Can we do that?
I'm not following the procedure. I mean, if you...
What I did is I printed out the list of the 15. Out of the 15, I Xed seven people that I thought, including the two councilmen. So if everybody does the same thing, we pass it around. The odds are we aren't picking all the same. The odds are we aren't going to pick 15, but we're going to have a happy medium somewhere and somebody... Every one of us had a choice of who's on there.
But doesn't the judge do that?
Huh?
Well, no, the judge is going to get a list of names from us.
From the council. And then this would be the list that the council would recommend. Otherwise, we can go right down, one by one. I really don't care.
It's basically kind of like voting, then. You're voting for our top five.
Yeah, you're just voting for your top five.
And then whoever gets the most, I suppose.
Well, you can take, and you can take all, whatever they are. If we want more than seven, the odds are we're going to end up with more than seven because we aren't all going to pick the same. So you might have eight, nine, 10. And every city council person...
I was just thinking, he's not sure we can do that.
I guess I'm still not sure of the process. So if you've got a list with all 15 names and you're checking seven only that you want...
Right.
And so it goes to the next counselor and if he picks...
Each one fills out their own.
Their own.
Right, okay. But if they, if they pick a different seven, and then the next counselor picks some of each...
The top vote-getters wouldn't...
They're only really going to pick five because we got Dave and Les are going to be on it anyway. So we're picking five out of the 13 that are left.
So basically, what you're saying is that the commission is only going to have seven people on it?
Well, no, we could have, no. We haven't really set that number yet. We're just saying we could have more than seven.
You'd have to prioritize every, every 1 through 15 is what you'd have to do if you want to do more than seven.
Mm-hmm.
If you're going to do seven, your deal would work, wouldn't it?
Because otherwise, as long as somebody gets one vote, we're going to have 15, right?
No. I don't think every one of us is going to vote for the same person.
You would just prioritize by their, by the number of checks they get and then...
Do you have to have at least three votes to make it, then?
No, you don't have to have any.
I think you just pick the number that you're going to have and then those top...
Well, we could take everyone that's marked because the odds are we could all pick every one of these. And we could.
They'd be the top vote-getters.
Some people are going to have five votes because they all voted for the same person. Some people are going to have two votes because only two of the counselors voted for that person. But if you start at the five votes and you go down until you reach your limit, the number of people that you want to have on the, on the commission.
Well, that, the question is till you reach your limit.
Yeah.
Because I heard that you could have 15 with this method.
Well, unless we're going to set a limit first.
Set the limit first.
Okay, well, that's, that's why I didn't hear that, so that...
If we had said, we said we want at least seven, and then somebody says, well, it'd be better to have maybe more. You even said that yourself. So we aren't really committed to a number. We would commit to a number by picking each one, picking five, and then whatever it is, it is. If it's 15, it's 15.
If you wanted to have nine people, you'd take the nine highest vote-getters.
Yes, exactly.
Yep. I understand.
But if you had a bunch of them that got one, you could add more people, is what I'm saying to you.
And the only time you'd have a question is if you had a tie. If you're a ninth person, there were, there were two other people, so there's three people that have the same, same points. Then you'd have to decide which one.
Right. Or we can go through one by one, but...
Well, I think we should decide on what and how many we want. How many, are we looking at nine? Are we looking at 10? Are we looking at all 15?
I guess I would go with nine or seven or nine. I don't think you want to get at 15 people. It's hard to accomplish things with too many.
I was thinking 10. I mean, if last time you had seven, if you're planning on meeting over the summer months, not everybody's going to be able to make it, then you always...
Should be an odd number.
Should be an odd number.
Okay, an odd number? Okay, go for nine.
I'm happy with nine.
I'll agree with a lucky nine.
So I'll offer a motion the charter commission be composed of no more than nine members.
I'll second that.
We got a motion and a second for nine? Any more discussion? See a nun? No in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Posse, no? Motion carries. Now, how we doing it?
I don't mind checking off nine or, you know, seven names.
Can I have Nicole go make some copies, quick?
I got copies made just in case we want to do it that way.
Works for me.
Get out your calculator, Nicole.
So.
To be very clear on our instructions, would you repeat?
Now we're quiet. Anybody got anything they want to say?
Right, we're going for nine, so we check seven candidates. Two counselors, we all are unanimous.
Eight, yeah.
Okay.
Wait a minute, you're going to have nine, but you're only picking seven? What if everybody picks...
We got the two counselors, which is nine.
Okay, so you're picking seven in addition. All right, got you.
Already are on it.
Okay.
Who gives...
Chali-ho.
Works for me.
Yeah, it works.
Do you need him signed for an official ballot or not?
Well, it'll be presented and then we'll vote on it, so, yep.
You can't vote for yourself more than one.
I did not. Well, myself and you.
One counselor got six. You're in trouble.
Don't know what to count? You want to go on and come back to this?
Can we do that?
Well, Nicole needs to be, I think, participating in this, so...
Well, somebody else wants to take minutes.
You wouldn't be able to read my handwriting.
The voting will be audited by the firm of...
Well, there's a few side bets in the audience, I think.
We want the top.
Six years. I didn't need all... Roger lived in that same house that I lived in. You were, was there probably an owner between us, probably? No. No Pfeiffer. Oh, yeah, yeah. No, another...
Okay, so people, there are several that got three. So it cuts off. So what do you want to do with all of those?
I'm not following.
The top vote, the top vote getter got five, the next two got four, and then the next...
We'll just keep, yeah.
Seven got three.
How many would that be, then?
So that takes us down to 12, or no, not 12, down to 10.
Well, Larry's idea, 10.
And that doesn't include the two counselors.
Yeah, so that would be 12.
What doesn't include? Okay.
So that would be 12 with all of them.
Alphabetical. I mean, they're all good. It's not...
It was not a fun pick last time either.
No.
They're all good and...
So we got, let's start at the top.
Okay, so the top, so Swan, Bill Swan, and then Sue Kimmel was the next, and then Wise, Mike Wise. And then we get into the people that got three votes.
And then everybody else got three?
No, then there was some with two and one.
All right, get down to the lowest, till we get down to one.
Well, everybody got, I mean, somebody, everybody got eight.
So Berg got three, Jeremy Berg, John Brownfield.
It's five.
Nick Hague, is that how you say that?
Yep.
And then Dwayne Hansel, Linda Heine, Rick Jensen. Or no, wait, these two were Xed out. No, I didn't count those.
Those are all three?
And then one more, Smith, Rachel Smith. All got three.
Ten plus the two counsel.
Twelve.
So we need to eliminate three.
Eliminate one and have 11. We already made the motion for nine, so...
Motions can be changed.
Did you, what was Jeremy Berg, did you say?
He got three.
He had the three, okay.
I guess, my opinion is, I just put them all on. I mean, we, we asked people to get involved with in the city. And we got people that wanna get involved, and some of these have never been involved in anything else anyway, so why not just give them the opportunity to?
Then you need to add or subtract one to get to an odd number, and the next.
Really, do we need an odd number? It's just for voting. Did you have a tie last time?
No, and chances of having anything controversial this time is pretty zero too, but. So, you had a two, two with one vote, one with?
One with one vote, and then two with two votes.
And those we took off, right? Those you didn't put on the list?
No, I didn't name those right now.
Okay, right.
So if we eliminated them, then we have.
They're not on the list.
They're not on the list.
We still got twelve, still have twelve. We got twelve, three or more.
Do we, you know, and I guess I don't know everybody, but do we have some with similar backgrounds that, you know, I know Jeremy Berg's an attorney and Linda Heiney's an attorney and Roger will be sitting on it, so, very similar backgrounds.
Well, yes and no, I think Linda Heiney, you know, is chair of the PUC, has got a whole different background than I would have, you know, in that.
But Bill Swan is, is one of them, and he's on the PUC, so we, we do have the PUC covered.
Right.
Like the city council is covered with two people too.
Right, well, yeah.
I know we also talked about making sure we keep younger people involved as well, so I, I wanna take a look at that. You know, another option that somehow whispered into my ear is just throw a few names or an odd number that list and, and pull a few numbers and, and we're done, we can move on. So. Throw the names in a hat and pull them out.
Out of those three, sure?
Or if you wanna narrow it down to nine.
I would narrow it down to nine, two and nine and.
We might have done that last time.
Those that got three, just put the names in the hat and draw from it.
Just because we had the same situation, there were just so many good people.
What, what, three, I thought they all had the same number.
Three vote.
Yeah, but there was more than three of them, right?
Eight of them that had three votes.
There was eight.
How many had three votes?
Yeah, that would be the fly-in, the whole argument, was that a large group of people tied for more than nine positions, kind of a thing.
So can you put the threes in a, in a hat and pull those?
How many threes do we have?
Seven threes, sorry.
Seven threes.
So you have to pull four.
So we pull four. Okay. Seven slips you gotta make.
Yeah, but, now, if you got twelve people and you wanna get to nine, you only have to pull three, right?
Yeah, you have to pull three.
Okay.
Three.
You have to take three off of the list.
What are we gonna?
You're pulling three, correct?
We're pulling three names to eliminate.
So the ones that we pull are the ones that are coming off of the list.
Oh, okay.
If you pull three.
Engineering just figured it out.
An engineer and then things get done.
You got them rolled out already?
We got Berg.
You need the numbers.
I'm just holding, I'm not to draw.
Brownfield. Can you read my handwriting?
Yeah.
Cancel.
Heiney. Jensen. Did we read that? Let's see. There's one more name, you don't have paper left. Smith.
I'd prefer not to.
Well, we got a police chief out there with a tremendous amount of respect.
So now to clarify, the ones we're taking out are the names that come off of the list, they're not on the charter.
Correct.
There you go.
So Hague comes off the list.
That's our younger people.
Smith. And Berg.
That's all our younger people.
Alright.
So.
So I'll, yeah, I'll read them off.
You'll read them off, okay.
The new members of this charter are.
So the commission would made up of Bill Swan, Sue Kimmel, Mike Wise. John Brownfield. Dwayne Hansel. Linda Heiney. Rick Jensen. And then Counselor Christian and Counselor Schultz.
Good job, move on.
The right number? Yep, eight, nine.
I'll offer a resolution pushing forward those names for the charter commission.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, offer a resolution, waived reading, any more discussion? See none, on favor say aye, oops, excuse me, Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item three B, consider resolution accepting donations of the partial, donation of the partial of number zero zero one point zero zero one point zero six three point one zero point one hundred south and adjacent to the Keasling House Park by the New Ulm Economic Development Authority to the City of New Ulm for incorporation into Keasling Park. Brian?
Uh, as the city council may be aware, the Economic Development Authority received an agenda item this last Tuesday, and after reviewing the options, decided that they were going to donate the land to the city for park and rec purposes attached to Keasling Park. And, uh, as, as, everything that, that's in the current lease would extend from the EDA through, to the city, and the city then would, or Park and Rec would receive the funds that the lease pays for use of parking lot and air easement. And since they have historically been, uh, paying for the expenses, this money then would, you know, be applied towards the lawn care, meaning and use of that particular area. The lamplighter lease payment will be received by the city starting in fiscal year two thousand eighteen.
Thank you. Any more discussion?
Just to comment, I'm a member of the Park and Rec Associate, or the Park and Rec Board, thank the EDA for it. With that, I'll be, offer the resolution, waive the reading to accept the donation of partial zero zero one point zero zero one point zero three point zero six three point one zero point one hundred south and adjacent to Keasling Park by the New Ulm Economic Development Authority to the City of New Ulm for incorporation into Keasling Park.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, offer a resolution, waived reading, any more discussion? See none, Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item three C, consider a motion awarding the bid for the Council Chamber High Definition AV Upgrade Project to ABI. Go ahead.
Hi, Stephen Sherman, Cable Access Coordinator, uh, so we're looking at approving the, the bid, the, we met with the Cable Advisory Board and the, we had four bids total, and the low bid was sixty thousand four fifty seven fifty five, and that was from ABI. Any questions?
I sit on the Cable Commission as well, we didn't, people are very excited about getting this forward and getting this moving in two thousand eighteen, um, so having that, I'll offer the motion to approve this.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, any more discussion? See none, on favor say aye.
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 Close, nope, motion carries, thank you. Item four A, consider resolution authorizing the support of the corridors of commerce funding for the expansion of US Highway fourteen. Brian?
The, actually, this morning I received correspondence from, uh, being that basically noting, for the record, that any resolution that gets passed before April sixteenth by the governmental entity will be applied to the application for corridors of commerce, which allows us up to forty-five additional points out of seven hundred, if I'm not mistaken. And if we were not to do this, if enough people didn't do this, uh, we wouldn't get the forty-five points, which then puts us definitely behind projects that their cities do adopt the resolution. So just that fact alone, if we don't do it, we lose out on forty-five points, we do do it, we better do it. So the, uh, the, uh, resolution is, is attached, it has all the language that hits the issues that the state is, you know, concerned about. And we are concerned about, uh, as Highway fourteen, you know, the, the gist of it is we want Highway fourteen to come and, and end in, in Ulam, not in Niklet.
I'll offer a motion, or offer a resolution to waive the reading and authorize the support of the corridors of commerce funding for the expansion of US Highway fourteen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, offer a resolution, waived reading, any more discussion?
So can we approve like four or five of these then?
Maybe if every board or commission were to do that here in.
No, maybe, I don't know.
See none, Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item four B, consider motion on early invested applications for the New Ulm members of the, from the, members of the New Ulm Fire Department Relief Association.
Uh, being that's already went through in front of the New Ulm Fire Department Relief Association Board of Trustees, and they unanimously approved it, I'll move to approve the application of Russell Shaver and Ross Martin to be placed on the New Ulm Fire Department Relief Association's deferred early vested pension role.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, any more discussion? See none, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close, nope, motion carries. Item four C, consider resolution in supporting the Minnesota Library Association Information and Technology Educators of the Minnesota two thousand eighteen Minnesota Legislative Platform. Chris?
Chris Wiley, New Ulm Public Library, President Schmitz and Counselors, state funding of libraries is required by law and is known as Regional Library Basic System Support, or RLBSS. This funding's allocated to twelve regional libraries across the state, our region is Traverse De Sue Library Cooperative, and includes nine counties and is headquartered in Mankato. Regional systems support libraries in many ways, for TDS, that includes a, a consolidated, shared online library catalog, organizing a delivery system, managing interlibrary loan services so patrons can receive items from all over the state, advocacy and more. That funding from the state, RLBSS, offsets some of the costs related to the services that I just mentioned, however, libraries in our region contract for services at TDS for some or everything that I mentioned above. Fees are assessed on a formula, could that consider such things as number of items owned and number of patrons? New Ulm's fee this year is thirty thousand two hundred eighty-five dollars, which is a fifteen percent increase since two thousand thirteen. State funding is distributed based on a formula that includes things such as population, area and square miles, equalization, and a base grant that has stayed the same since two thousand ten. The Legislative Platform supports state funding to increase basic funding for library systems, along with a formula change that includes an increase in base support from five percent to fifteen percent, as well as a decrease in equalization from twenty-five percent to fifteen percent. This is important because TDS currently receives no funds in the equalization portion of this formula. These changes are included in a bill that is open in the state legislature and is co-authored by Senator Gary Dames. The TDS, I'm sorry, the Brown County Board of Commissioners received a report on this item on February sixth and approved support by resolution on this this morning. The New Ulm Public Library Board did the same at its meeting January eleventh. Your staff at New Ulm Public Library is passionate about the work we do, and we are committed to maintaining community spaces and library services for all. So in conclusion, I ask that you pass a resolution in support of the two thousand eighteen Minnesota Library Association Information Educators, Information and Technology Educators of Minnesota Legislative Platform, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading, supporting the Minnesota Library Association Information and Technology Education of Minnesota two thousand eighteen Minnesota Legislative Platform.
Second. We got a motion and a second, offer a resolution, waived reading, any more discussion? See none? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Four D, consider a motion approving with renewal terms for collaborative bargaining agreement with the law enforcement, labor services and corporate L, LELS, Local one fifty, for a period beginning January first, two thousand eighteen, and expiring December thirty first, two thousand nineteen. Brian?
Mr. President, city council members, this is a, a two-year agreement with LELS, Local one fifty, and the negotiating team looked towards a two-year contract, primarily to bring all of the labor contracts into sync in one year. We find that to be beneficial to the pay adjustments and, and syncing everything together, it just makes a whole lot of more sense. So we did go for a two-year agreement, requested, that's what the ratify, ratified agreement by LELS accepted. The wage adjustments will be movement to the new wage scale and a one and a half percent wage adjustment, which is what basically all the other unions in the, in the city exempt employees and non-exempt employees received. And then in the year of fiscal year two thousand nineteen, would be a wage adjustment of two percent. The, we did add some languages, uh, that all employees will be assigned to the same relative step, this is the class and compensation study that we had done, you know, in two, two thousand seventeen, they accepted the adjustments, uh, so that will be in addition to the wage adjustment. Each employee covered by the agreement will be paid a one-time lump sum signing bonus of five hundred dollars, and there's some medical supply language that our current insurance does not offer, uh, so that needs to, you know, get, get taken out. We changed the parental leave language to, in the contract, to pregnancy and parental leave due to the change in the law, so kinda like just cleaning up the contract. Added health savings account language due to the added benefit that's being offered by the city, and added the Affordable Care Act language due to the possibility of this being repealed. The other contracts have the same language that the city is associated with, with our labor contracts, it's just basically recognizing that that particular federal law could disappear, it could stay, it could change, you know, so we need to have language in there. So, uh, these items have been ratified by the Local one fifty membership, and they have. So these items have been ratified by the Local one fifty membership and they have signed the labor agreement document in anticipation of approval by the city council. So we do have the funds sufficient to meet the contract negotiation terms and I would therefore recommend that the city council approve the two-year labor agreement between the City of New Ulm and LELS Local one fifty.
A motion to approve the terms of the two-year labor agreement between the City of New Ulm and LELS Local one fifty for the period beginning January one two thousand and eighteen expiring December thirty-first two thousand and nineteen.
Second.
We got a motion in a second, any more discussion?
I have a couple of questions. Is this the first time we've had a signing bonus in, that I can recall, correct?
Yeah, to my knowledge, since I've been here, there's not been a signing bonus.
I don't recall that. So is this because of the new system that we have in place where we only have the six steps that some of us had concerns about, that there's only six steps and now you're done, so now we're going to start adding signing bonuses?
No, this just was looking at the total package and this is what it took to get it done.
So is this something we're going to start seeing a lot of?
I would hope not, but we'll see what the next negotiations comes up with.
Brian, it was my understanding that it was because there was a delay in them adopting, being able to adopt that salary increase from the, the pay scale, is that, is that part of?
Well, yeah, everybody else, everybody else got on the competent classification study last year and, and they did not, they're coming on a year later and this adjustment is being made. But the actual value of that five hundred dollars was not based upon any calculations to represent making up that difference kind of a thing. It was, it's a number that may be part of that discussion, but it's, it was what it took to.
Well, to, Mr. President, to further, you know, explain this, I think this, what you've raised certainly was brought up by the union and that was something that they felt very strongly about. And their reasons is because these contracts end at different years that theirs wasn't addressed. This was a result of several rounds of negotiation. And ultimately, as I think the city manager is alluding to here, this is a compromise and this is what it took to get a contract that the union would accept. Otherwise, we could be going into arbitration or something like that. The signing bonus, many times it's actually a benefit to the employer because it doesn't get wrapped into a wage that then gets increased by one and a half percenter. So again, it's after a lot of negotiating, this is, I think, the best deal we could come up with for the city.
So I'm going to ask the next question. I want to, how much does that five hundred dollars cost the city?
I think we have somebody can answer that.
Somebody ready for that question?
I, I know how many members there are. It's twenty-two members times five hundred dollars.
Eleven thousand dollars.
Yeah, eleven thousand dollars is what.
So are we going to see, you think we'll start seeing this in other contracts?
They, they could bring it up. Part of our reasoning is, like I said, because of, like Brian said, because of the comp study, they didn't get it. They could bring it up, but this is what, this is what it took to, to get the contract done. There was a lot of many hours of discussion with LELS. So what it came down to was the numbers and we felt it was fair.
All right, just want to ask the questions, thank you.
Sure.
Any more discussion? See a nun, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no, motion carries. Item four E, consider resolution accept donations offered to the city park and rec department.
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading.
Second.
We got a motion in a second off a resolution waived reading, any more discussion? See a nun, finance director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz.
Yes, motion carries.
Ladies will go out in the morning.
Thank you, Mayor. Item four F, consider resolution authorizing a grant application for the Alina Health Neighborhood Health Connection Program for up to ten thousand dollars.
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading.
We got a motion in a second off a resolution waived reading, any more discussion? See a nun, finance director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz.
Yes, motion carries. Item four G, consider resolution authorizing overnight camping and recreational fires in the South Chairman Park for the BMX racing event on Friday night, June twenty-ninth and thirtieth, and Saturday night, June thirtieth and July first.
I'll offer that resolution, waive the reading.
Second.
Second. We got a motion in a second off a resolution waived reading, any more discussion?
It's been a great event.
See a nun, finance director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz.
Yes, motion carries. Item four H, consider resolution approving the recommendation of the two thousand and seventeen year-end transfers and encumbrances. Anybody have anything on that? Nicole?
I requested of each department head to look through their budgets of what was left last year and decide if there was anything that would still be spent in two thousand and eighteen and went from there, so.
Some we've talked about, is there anything that's standing out in your, as you reviewed it? I mean, it was, some of them are pretty standard and.
Yeah, most of them were ones that we do every year.
Right.
Where there's a little bit left or things that were accounted for when they did their budgeting, so.
Usually I question quite a few every year, but this year I just didn't have any, so I'm going to offer the resolution, waive the reading approving these.
Second. We got a motion in a second off a resolution waived read, any more discussion?
I have a question on the fire department. We carried over like eight thousand last year for the electronic parking ticket system and this year we're carrying over seventeen thousand or almost eighteen thousand. You know, it was budgeted for two thousand and sixteen.
There was just a delay in, I think, deciding which software they were going to go with and then deciding when to actually put it into play when it would be available. I believe right now it will go in probably March, April.
So when it was budgeted for eight thousand and now we have seventeen that we're going to carry over, is that all in consideration then? How much is the software?
So it'll be the seven, I can't remember how much the software is, I don't know where that came in at.
Here it comes.
Council president, counselors, the anticipated project is going to cost about forty-seven thousand dollars. Hardware, software, training, it's anticipated will go with the software vendor Tyler Technologies. Currently, that's the, I believe, the.
It's what we use for our financial.
And HR software, so. Yeah, getting away from paper.
So there's a portion in their budget already for eighteen, this will add to what was there enough to cover.
Okay.
Okay. Any more discussion? See a nun? Finance director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz.
Yes, motion carries. Item four I, first reading of ordinance number eighteen dash zero two three, fifth series, amending section nine point oh four of the city code, city of New Ulm relative to zoning in said city. Roger.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is what charter commissions will be for. Ordinance number eighteen dash zero two three, fifth series, city of New Ulm, Brown County, Minnesota, an ordinance amending section nine point oh four of the city code of the city of New Ulm relative to zoning in said city. Be ordained by the city council of the city of New Ulm, section one, that the zoning map referenced in subdivision two of section nine point oh four, the city code of the city of New Ulm is hereby amended as follows. The following describe real property heretofore zoned RA Agricultural Residence District is hereby re-designated and rezoned to R one, single-family residence district. That part of outlots one two seven and one three one in the city of New Ulm, Brown County, Minnesota, described as follows. Beginning at the most westerly corner of lot eight, block two, Fair Hills Fifth Edition, then south fifty-five degrees thirty-eight minutes, eleven seconds west bearing based on the Brown County coordinate system, NAD eight three zero seven, on the northwesterly line of Maplewood Drive is dedicated per Maplewood Drive First Edition, a distance of forty-six point two-two feet, then southwesterly, a distance of one hundred three point eight-nine feet on a tangential curve to the right having a radius of one thousand three hundred ten feet and a central angle of four degrees thirty-two minutes thirty-seven seconds, thence north thirty-four degrees twenty-eight minutes forty-nine seconds west, not tangent to said curve, a distance of seven hundred sixty-two point nine-three feet, thence north fifty-four degrees thirty-seven minutes thirty-nine seconds east, a distance of one hundred fifty-point zero-two feet to the most westerly corner of lot one of said block two, then south thirty-four degrees twenty-eight minutes forty-nine seconds east on the southwesterly line of said block two, a distance of seven hundred sixty-nine point four-two feet to the point of beginning. Said parcel contains two point six five acres of land. Section two, that the zoning map referenced in subdivision two of section nine point oh four of the city code of the city of New Ulm is hereby amended as follows. The following describe property heretofore zoned RA Agricultural Residence District is hereby re-designated and rezoned to R one, single-family residence district. That part of outlots one two seven, one two eight, one two nine, one three zero and one three one in the city of New Ulm, Brown County, Minnesota, described as follows. Commencing at the most westerly corner of lot eight, block two, Fair Hills Fifth Edition, then south fifty-five degrees thirty-one minutes eleven seconds west bearings based on the Brown County coordinate system, NAD eight three zero seven, on the northwesterly line of Maplewood Drive is dedicated per Maplewood First, Maplewood Drive First Edition, a distance of forty-six point two-two feet, then southwesterly on said right-of-way line, a distance of one hundred sixty-four point two-one feet on a tangential curve to the right having a radius of one thousand three hundred ten feet and a central angle of seven degrees ten minutes fifty-five seconds to the point of beginning, thence continuing southwesterly and westerly on said right-of-way line, a distance of five hundred twenty-five point eight-five feet, on said tangential curve to the right having a radius of one thousand three hundred ten feet and a central angle of twenty-two degrees fifty-nine minutes fifty-seven seconds, then south eighty-five degrees forty-two minutes three seconds west on said right-of-way line and tangent to said curve, a distance of one hundred eighty-six point four-six feet to the west line of said outlot one twenty-nine, thence north zero degrees twenty minutes thirty-four seconds east on the west line of said outlots one two nine and one two eight, a distance of five hundred nineteen point eight-nine feet. Thence northeasterly, a distance of one hundred forty-two point one-two feet on a tangential curve to the right having a radius of one hundred fifty feet and a central angle of fifty-four degrees seventeen minutes five seconds, thence north fifty-four degrees thirty-seven minutes thirty-nine seconds east, tangent to said curve, a distance of two hundred thirty-eight point four feet, then south thirty-four degrees twenty-eight minutes forty-nine seconds east, a distance of seven hundred fifty-five point eight-three feet to the point of beginning. Said parcel contains seven point eight-two acres of land. Section three, that the zoning map referenced in subdivision two of section nine point oh four, the city code of the city of New Ulm is hereby amended as follows. The following describe property heretofore zoned RA Agricultural Residence District is hereby re-designated and rezoned to R two, single and two-family residence district. That part of outlot one two seven in the city of New Ulm, Brown County, Minnesota, described as follows. Beginning at the most westerly corner of lot six, block three, Fair Hills Fifth Edition, then south fifty-four degrees thirty-seven minutes thirty-nine seconds west, bearings based on the Brown County coordinate system, NAD eight three zero seven, on the northwesterly line of Birchwood Drive and its southwesterly extension is dedicated per Fair Hills Fifth Edition, a distance of two hundred point zero-four feet, thence north thirty-four degrees twenty-eight minutes forty-nine seconds west, a distance of one hundred thirty-one point nine-five feet to the southeasterly line of parcel two three one as per MinDOT right-of-way plant zero eight dash eleven, thence north fifty-five degrees thirty-one minutes eleven seconds east on the southeasterly line, a distance of two hundred feet to the southwesterly line of said lot six. Then south thirty-four degrees twenty-eight minutes forty-nine seconds east on said southwesterly line, a distance of one hundred twenty-eight point eight-three feet to the point of beginning. Said parcel contains point six zero acres of land. Section four, that the zoning map referenced in subdivision two of section nine point oh four, the city code of the city of New Ulm is hereby amended as follows. The following describe property heretofore zoned RA Agricultural Residence District is hereby re-designated and rezoned to R one, single-family residence district. That part of outlots one two seven and one two eight in the city of New Ulm, Brown County, Minnesota, described as follows. Commencing at the most westerly corner of lot six, block three, Fair Hills Fifth Edition, then south fifty-four degrees thirty-seven minutes thirty seconds, thirty-nine seconds west, bearings based on the Brown County coordinate system, NAD eight three zero seven, on the northwesterly line of Birchwood Drive and its southwesterly extension is dedicated per Fair Hills Fifth Edition, a distance of two hundred point zero-four feet to the point of beginning, thence continuing south fifty-four degrees thirty-seven minutes thirty-nine seconds west on said southwesterly extension, a distance of three hundred fifty-seven point zero-two feet to the west line of said outlot one two eight, thence north zero zero degrees twenty minutes thirty-four seconds east in said west line, a distance of one hundred sixty-seven point five-zero feet to the most southerly corner of parcel two three one as per MinDOT right-of-way plant zero eight dash eleven, thence north fifty-five degrees thirty-one minutes eleven seconds east on the southeasterly line of said parcel two three one, a distance of two hundred sixty-one point three-two feet, then south thirty-four degrees twenty-eight minutes forty-nine seconds east, a distance of one hundred thirty-nine point nine feet to the point of beginning. Said parcel contains point nine-five acres of land. Section five, that the city engineers hereby ordered to make the necessary alterations to the official map of the city of New Ulm to reflect these changes. Section six, that this ordinance shall take effect and shall be enforced thirty days from and after its adoption, approval and publication.
Thank you.
One of the very first things we'll change on the charter commission is how we look at these readings, official word notices.
Roger would appreciate it.
Roger might be the first one, prepare the language for that.
All right, thank you, Rod. That concludes the agenda items, now we have an addendum, so.
I'll offer motions to suspend the rules for actions on the addendum.
Second. We got a motion in a second, suspend rules, any more? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no, motion carries. Okay, addendum item, license of permits, consider a motion approving the issuance of lawful gambling permit for Cathedral of Holy Trinity to conduct raffle gambling at the Cathedral of Holy Trinity.
I'll offer the motion to approve the issuance of lawful gambling permit for Cathedral of Holy Trinity, six oh five North State Street to conduct raffle gambling at their establishment on Friday, March twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any more discussion? See a nun, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no, motion carries, but no more business, meeting adjourned.